Not too bad, how are you doing?
Not bad.
Root tax?
Yeah.
Now I don't.
There it is.
Oh, you made it.
It did. How much time do we have? Three minutes. I got a question that.
We go there?
Yeah, about that. Question, you done it for me?
Yep.
Okay, so just a little bit of company. Just a little bit of company, I know Mike's not coming. I could do with Alice. I thought there was more on this. And. Well, Mike, but we need a form. I'm not quite sure. Not quite. Okay, yeah. Okay, Dad. I was.
That's the first, right?
Yeah, for once in a while.
They like. I would like to give you a whole piece. What's that for?
That's what. Oh, come on, just. Oh, we can get a form. So, I mean, I'm here. What, what, yeah, we said the whole meeting. No, no.
So they're saying that they're wondering.
So what is the testing name? That's not my name. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Well, it's like you gotta keep shut up, shut up. Yeah, that's super cool. Yeah, you can make your. Yeah, you can shut up. That, and shouldn't say anything. We told everybody that.
All right. No, no.
They're just gonna go pick up Jeff.
That wakes you up, doesn't it?
How's it going, Carlos? You doing what you? Good. Good, Thomas.
Yeah, they're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. But Charles sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. Yeah, they're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. The trial sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. Yeah, they're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. The trial sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. 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 They're saying that they're wondering. So, what is the testing name? That's not my name. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Well, it's like you gotta keep shut up, shut up. Yeah, that's super cool. Yeah, you can make your. Yeah, you can shut up. That, and shouldn't say anything. We told everybody that.
All right. No, no.
They're just gonna go pick up Jeff. Oh.
That wakes you up, doesn't it?
How's it going, Carlos? You doing what you? Good. Good, Thomas.
Yeah, they're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. The trial sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. So.
That wakes you up, doesn't it?
How's it going, Carlos? You doing what you? Good. Good, Thomas.
Yeah, they're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. The trial sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Yeah. They're not gonna hold Alice, but Mike then couldn't make it. And that's the reason why Sandy and me, they're. The trial sometimes is a little. Yeah, yeah, just a little late. I haven't. Yeah. So. 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 Let's call them into order. So we did a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jeff, where are you? Here. Girl?
Here.
And.
I'm here, I'm here. I don't know, she give me such a bad time, I come home, every time, I just. I'm being abused here, I'm gonna report that.
Does anyone have any opening remarks they'd like to put out there? Moving forward, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law? Yes, we are. At this time, we'll take public comment related to the items on the agenda below, in consideration of others who may also wish to provide public comment, please avoid repetition and limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
I got a question, first. Uh, conditions of use permit for, or. No. No one's.
Patrick Sadio. Patrick Sadio.
He owns the. Ben's.
No, he owns the property.
He owns the property.
He owns the property and she owns the truck.
Okay. I thought Bren's gonna own that.
No. And he has a statement in here that says it's okay.
That's my. That's. That was exactly.
Upcoming grant request, anyway. Next item, items for discussion, possible action of the Caliente Planning Commission, item 3A, approve or deny minutes from 5/5/2021.
I make a motion to reapprove the minutes.
Would you like to second? He's reading.
He's reading them, so we gotta get him a minute.
Would you like to second for motion to approve the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item, 3A, approve or deny Kelly Castor's request for a conditional use permit to run Cafe Caliente, a mobile coffee truck at number one Company Road, Caliente, Nevada. There were only two responses, that letter, yours, and then one that just said no objection, and no comments on it. I believe I had to catch that. Maybe it's. Did you have anything you wanted to say, or? Yeah.
I noticed in this one, they don't object, they thought under the condition it was to be moved every night, is that something that is in our, the way it's written, or is it just something we assumed, or how's that work?
I mean, you can order that, I guess, the city council with your recommendation can order that as part of the conditional use permit, that trailer be removed every night.
Um.
I don't know if.
It wasn't, we pulled the ordinance and it's not written in there.
No.
I think it was, if it's on city property, then that, then it has to be moved. Here's the.
Yeah, I don't see how we can make it, if it's on private property, make somebody move it.
Yeah.
Can we? Well, not necessarily, because it's, it's mobile anyway, I mean, you can move it anytime, but it's like having, I would think it's like having a unit in your yard where you have a storage unit that's not completely nailed down, that you can.
I guess I'm. But that's just what I think.
Why you're showing that? Because that just says that if she has, she's renting from the landowner.
Right.
So, that, doesn't that kind of say she has a contract with them?
Right, no, what that says is that you're not allowed to vend on an undeveloped lot unless there's a contractual arrangement with the landowner, that has nothing to do with her moving her trailer.
No, I thought this one said that. Yeah, yeah, I pointed to the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
So, my only concern was that she has a mobile food truck permit, is, has that been awarded at this time?
A little what?
Mobile business license?
The mobile food permit. There's a whole, we did a whole thing on setting up mobile food permits, and I was wondering if that is, has been done yet, or?
It's in the process, it is in the process, we got our health permit today, okay, and so, we'll have that, we should have that finished, good, finished up this week.
So, I'm just gonna put it out there, I, I'm had a challenge, had challenges with the, with the taco truck.
Yes.
Because they are still not in compliance, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see her in compliance with her actual permit, or prior to us actually awarding the. Okay. I saw that in the ordinance, I can't find your permit anywhere.
No, 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 that's on us.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, no, that's not true.
No words. No, no. That, the mobile state business license, I can't even, I'm just waiting for this to happen.
And you just thought your health.
And the health permit. I have. The mobile food truck permit, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
That would be my suggestion.
Well, but it almost seems like the conditional use permit is part of that.
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying, like, she almost, in my, from the way I understand it, that she would have to have the conditional use permit approved to be a part of that package, does that make sense? Is that correct?
That, correct?
I, the, I think the conditional use permit and the mobile food vending license are two separate things.
Okay.
You can have a mobile food vending license, doesn't necessarily need a conditional use permit, because there are going to be mobile food vendors that aren't always going to be on a lot, I guess, right?
Okay.
So those are two separate things, but back to, sorry, Commissioner Phillips' initial question regarding the removal, so that's separate from what it says under subsection J, I there, so I says that you're, you've got to read it as a whole, right? So it says, you're not allowed to vend on any one parcel for more than, for more than 10 hours within a 24-hour period, unless you're under a, unless you have a contractual relationship or arrangement with a landowner, right? But that's separate from the conditional use permit, because.
Yes.
The zone is a residential, and you guys are in charge of what you will and will not allow under a conditional use permit.
Oh.
So if the board's feeling is that she has to move the trailer every evening, that's a decision that you guys can make, or a recommendation that you can make to the city council, it doesn't necessarily, but since she's under a contractual arrangement, she can leave that trailer on, as long as she has that contractual arrangement with the landowner, but that's a separate issue from the conditional, conditional use permit, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, because the conditional use is just.
So if, if it's on city property, they had to remove it every night, is that correct?
Unless they had a contractual agreement with the city to leave it on there for.
Which right now, with any of the mobile vehicles, we don't have that, right?
Correct.
Also, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're.
No, they won't.
Well, so the question, yeah, but you're on a residentially zoned lot.
Yeah, that's why you need the conditional use permit.
So, that, that, that would be my advice, and you guys can do it either way, this council commission can do it either way.
Okay, right now, it's just zoned for coffee trailer, right?
Right now, it's, it's a zoned residential lot.
Yeah, but, but, but she's, she's.
Highway.
Highway.
Unless I'm not in a zone highway.
I thought that was changed in the last.
No, I changed that.
Yeah, that was changed to residential.
I'll pull up the map right now.
But, a- anyway, I'm saying she's asked for, for coffee only, is that correct? You're asking for coffee only?
Yes.
Okay. So if something else decided they want to put, if you want to put something else on there, you'd have to get another one on, just verifying what, what's going on.
I would still reiterate, I would like to see all, everything in compliance, and I'm sure she's probably fine, but we let it go last time and it did not get done, so. Listen, here ago, we did this.
Uh, while you're looking that up, do we have, this is, maybe I better wait, it's separate, on any other mobile home, I mean, mobile thing that sells, do we have a way to control where they put those?
Hmm, no, other than what the ordinance says.
No, we, we went through this.
Anyway, I'm just, I mean, let's, let's finish this one up first, but that's just a question I have, maybe that we can discuss and try to figure out how we can control some of that. I know when it goes on somebody's own property, it's a different story, but.
So, yeah, so they just can't be in residential zones, but anyway, it is on, according to the Lincoln County map, it's a zone of single-family residential, just to let you know.
Okay.
We did, we changed it to.
Single, from a commercial to a.
Because people weren't able to sell their houses. Yeah.
That's how it shows up in the Lincoln County land use map. Anyway.
So would anybody like to enter?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the permit.
Second.
And of course, with, with that, I always like to have an update every year, I, I like to hear how it's going, what's going on.
And we make that a condition of the, in other words, we approve it with an annual update?
Yeah, annual review.
Because if we do that, and things don't go right, or it gets too busy and it starts to be a hazard, then we have the opportunity to look at and get, say, no, it's time to make a change, anytime we do this, I think we always have to have a, someplace where they have to come back and check with us, so if it does get busy and too much traffic and everything else, I think we need to look at it. Or if they're making lots of money, for example, let them buy a building, so we have another building opened up for business, it looks good uptown, see all those businesses.
I made a. Yeah. Okay. Wasn't here now, maybe there's.
Mm-hmm. So anyway, I make the motion.
Okay.
So at this point, the motion is that we're going to approve it.
He's reading them, so we gotta get him a minute.
Would you like to second the motion to approve the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item. 3A, approve or deny Kelly Castor's request for a conditional use permit to run Cafe Caliente, a mobile coffee truck at Number One Company Road, Caliente, Nevada.
There were only two responses, that letter, yours, and then one that just said no objection. And no comment on it. I believe I attached that.
Did you have anything you wanted to say, or?
I noticed in this one, they don't object. They thought, under the condition, it was to be moved every night. Is that something that is in... Are, the way it's written, or is it just something we assumed, or how's that work?
I mean, you can order that, I guess, the city council with your recommendation can order that as part of the conditional use permit, that trailer be removed every night. I don't know if.
It wasn't, we pulled the ordinance and it's not written in there.
No.
Is this the?
I think it was, if it's on city property, then that, then it has to be moved.
Yeah, I don't see how we can make it, if it's on private property, make somebody move it.
Yeah.
Can we? Well. Not necessarily, because it's, it's mobile anyway. I mean, you can move it anytime. But it's like having, I would think it's like having a unit in your yard where you have a storage unit that's not completely nailed down, that you can...
I guess I'm confused why you're showing that.
Oh, because... That just says that if she has, she's renting from the landowner.
Right.
So that, doesn't that kind of say she has a contract with them?
Right. What that says is that you're not allowed to vend on an undeveloped lot unless there's a contractual arrangement with the landowner. That has nothing to do with removing her trailer.
No, I thought this one said that. Yeah, yeah, I pointed to the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
So my only concern was that she has a... Mobile food truck permit. Has that been awarded at this time?
A little what?
My other business license?
The mobile food permit. There's a whole, we did a whole thing on setting up mobile food permits, and I was wondering if that is, has been done yet, or?
It's in the process. It is in the process. We got our health permit today, okay? And so, we'll have that, we should have that finished, good, finished up this week.
So, I'm just gonna put it out there. I, I'm, had a, had challenges with the, with the taco truck.
Yes.
Because they are still not in compliance, as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to see her in compliance with her actual permit, or, or, prior to us actually awarding the...
I saw that in the ordinance.
No, 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 that's on us. Yeah, no, that's not you.
No, no.
And you just got your health.
And the health permit I have.
The mobile food truck permit, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
That would be my suggestion.
Well, but it almost seems like the conditional use permit is part of that.
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, she almost, in my, from the way I understand it, that she would have to have the conditional use permit approved to be a part of that package. Does that make sense?
Correct?
I, I think the conditional use permit and the mobile food vending license are two separate things.
Okay.
You can have a mobile food vending license, doesn't necessarily need a conditional use permit, because there are going to be mobile food vendors that aren't always going to be in a lot, I guess, right?
Okay.
So those are two separate things. But back to, sorry, Commissioner Phillips' initial question regarding the removal. So that's separate from what it says under subsection I there. So I says that you're, you've got to read it as a whole, right? So it says, you're not allowed to vend on any one parcel for more than, for more than 10 hours within the 24-hour period, unless you're under, unless you have a contractual relationship or arrangement with the landowner, right? But that's separate from the conditional use permit, because
Yes.
the zone is a residential, and you guys are in charge of what you will and will not allow under a conditional use permit. So if the board's feeling is that she has to move the trailer every evening, that's a decision that you guys can make, or a recommendation that you can make to the city council. It doesn't necessarily, but since she's under a contractual arrangement, she can leave that trailer on, as long as she has that contractual arrangement with the landowner. But that's a separate issue from the conditional use permit. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, because the conditional use is just...
So if, if it's on city property, they have to remove it every night. Is that correct?
Unless they had a contractual agreement with the city to leave it on there.
Which, right now, with any of the mobile vehicles, we don't have that, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're... Well, so the question, yeah, but you're on a residentially zoned lot.
Yeah, that's why you need the conditional use permit.
So, that, that, that would be my advice, and you guys can do it either way. This council, commission can do it either way.
Okay, right now, it's just zoned for coffee trailer, right?
Right now, it's, it's a zoned residential lot.
Yeah, but, 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 she's, she's... Highway.
I thought that was changed in the last.
Changed that.
Yeah, that was changed to residential.
I'll pull up the map right now.
But, a- anyway, I'm saying, she's asked for, for coffee only, is that correct? You're asking for coffee only?
Yes.
Okay. So if something else decided they want to put, if you want to put something else on there, you'd have to get another one on. Just verifying what, what's going on.
I would still reiterate, I would like to see all, everything in compliance. And I'm sure she's probably fine, but we let it go last time and it did not get done, so.
While you're looking that up, do we have, this is, maybe I better wait. It's separate, on any other mobile home, I mean, mobile thing that sells, do we have a way to control where they put those?
No. Other than what the ordinance says.
No, we, we went through this.
Anyway, I'm just, I mean, let's, let's finish this one up first, but that's just a question I have. Maybe that we can discuss and try to figure out how we can control some of that. I know when it goes on somebody's own property, it's a different story, but...
So, yeah, so they just can't be in residential zones. But anyway, it is on, according to the Lincoln County map, it's zoned as single-family residential. Just to let you know.
Okay.
We did, we changed it to.
Single, from the commercial to a.
Because people weren't able to sell their houses. Yes.
That's how it shows up in the Lincoln County Land Use Map.
So would anybody like to enter?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the permit. Second. And of course, with, with that, I always like to have an update every year. I, I like to hear how it's going, what's going on.
And we make that a condition of the, in other words, we approve it with an annual update?
Yeah, annual review.
Because if we do that, and things don't go right, or it gets too busy and it starts to be a hazard, then we have the opportunity to look at it and say, no, it's time to make a change. Anytime we do this, I think we always have to have a, someplace where they have to come back and check with us. So if it does get busy and too much traffic and everything else, I think we need to look at it. Or if they're making lots of money, for example, let them buy a building so we have another building opened up for business. It looks good uptown, it's in all those businesses. Yeah. Mm-hmm. So anyway, I make the motion.
Okay. So at this point, the motion is that we're going to approve it with an annual update, correct? Are you seconding that motion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, for discussion only, any and all projects within the city? Any comments or complaints received?
No. You can call us, and yes, we have a complaint form. And we'll fill it out for you.
And you can.
Please.
Next item on the agenda is public comment, related to any matters concerning City of Caliente. In consideration of others who may also wish to provide public comment, please avoid repetition and limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
You have to come up here.
Hey, Mary Nagel Portal. I want to see the taco truck and the other trucks that are going in the wrong way stopped. It's dangerous. I've almost got hit twice. And there is going to be somebody hurt, somebody killed. It's illegal. There are now trucks and cars coming up the wrong way to go to the taco truck. The sheriff's office says it's the city, the city says it's the sheriff's office. To me, I'm sorry, it's Calienny. It is the City of Calienny responsible. So anything you guys can do to find them a safe place to park would be greatly appreciated, because I'm not the only one in town that feels this way.
Is the snow cone truck doing the same thing?
It was yesterday.
Okay.
It was parked to where it was going to leave the wrong way.
And, I'm just curious, why do we have them parked there? Why don't we have them park against the curb? Straight, as they round the corner and just park right next to the curb? But couldn't they run that across the road anyway? And that way, we have no complications with traffic or anything else. I'm just wondering.
So is your, I guess your solution is that for them to park along the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I just don't know what that would do to the traffic coming in, but I don't think we can take a look at that.
I would have a couple of comments on that. First of all, that sidewalk is in really, really, really bad shape. That's a lawsuit waiting.
But if they, if they come in and park this way, every door is on this side. The feeding place is on this side. And it's in the shade, 90% of the time, it's in the shade. So when people are waiting, they're in the shade. The only thing you have is the power. Anyways, it's just, is a comment that maybe we can talk more in the next meeting or something? I don't know.
Yeah, or just have someone from the city go talk to them individually and see if we can find a resolution to it. I think that's the easiest way to do it, is we'll have someone from the city office go talk to them individually and figure out a resolution.
I, I will say, on that matter, I have noticed a lot of people going the wrong way, where typically it was never that way.
I, I've noticed people going the wrong way at the, at the post office more, too. Which I think that should have been the right way to go into the first question.
I agreed with Mary. And very loud in the city council about them coming in the wrong way. And I talked to them people about it. And a couple of weeks later, I seen them doing it again. So I talked with the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department said they talked to them, and they watched them, and they said, it's safer to have them do it that way than any other way. So we didn't bother them. But I still think that the, that's... They would find you or me if they seen us going in the wrong way.
Well, not only that.
I did talk with the sheriff's department, and they're not enforcing it. Unless we put our foot down.
I guess.
I'm not an enforcement mechanism, I'm a prosecution mechanism, right? I don't, can't, I can't write citations. Talk to them, but until they act on it, there's nothing we can do. I can do. I'll talk to Chase and see what he says about that.
Also, I have a couple of things on the... Well, happy birthday. Happy birthday. I don't know whose birthday it is, but... All right. A couple of things I have is, we've talked about trailers, maybe people living in trailers that we need to check. So I'd like to bring that up sometime in the meeting. Can't name names, we still have people doing, selling stuff without a license. That we've talked about, maybe sending a letter to. And I can't say it out loud, because you can't say names. And nothing's happened there. And I'd just like to see what we can do about making people follow the rules. I mean, we have them for a reason.
Come talk to me after the meeting.
Okay.
Is that something we can put on the agenda, or at this point, or no?
We were supposed to send this person a letter, and I don't ever remember seeing them getting, or they haven't been here to...
Now, is this for the occupancy of the, or for?
I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards. I have to talk to you afterwards.
See, that's, yeah.
And then, and I'd still like to look at, work on the ordinance 138, because there's another person on my street that's been there less than a year, and is, the yard is being built up pretty good with extra cars and supplies. Four cars. Yeah.
Any other public comment? At this time, we'll schedule the date and review the agenda topics for the next meeting.
Or no, the 16th, sorry. Having a day.
Isn't that when they're moving the city council meeting to?
Is that what they're moving the city council?
Oh, it's the 15th, okay.
Why, why were?
Because they have a League of Cities meeting that weekend, so I don't know. Maybe they moved it to the 15th. Actually, I did, because, yeah, you're fine on the 16th.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be gone on the 16th, but.
So will I.
Yeah.
By normal standard time.
Do we have any agenda topics at this time?
Do we have any agenda topics at this time?
I don't know how we're gonna come.
At the moment, but that can change very quickly.
Now, Ken, I was just off the topic, I guess, before we close, but... Kevin says he wants an easement for that property down by my place. And I told him he'd probably have to come here and get the letters out and all that other stuff to get it approved by all the neighbors. Is that right? Okay.
So that's in the making.
Okay, perfect. Perfect.
Form to fill out.
Yes.
I found that out.
Okay.
Then at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Slide just down.